Yeah, I should at least get a coupon to Coors.
Yeah, I haven't ready yet. I gotta go. I'm trying to get all this organized here.
I don't think that's, I, that's okay.
We can do it, we can do it under communications.
Do it under BZI.
Yeah, we can pick out, uh, yeah.
Town of Maryville Town Council meeting is called to order at six thirty.
Microphone?
You might, you might.
I'm sorry. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Joan Mear. Are you here today? Joan Mear? Okay, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Holy Father, we ask you through your eternal life and truth, give us the spirit of courage and right judgment so we can continue to do what we do best and for the people of our town. In God's name, we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the beautiful republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, in the good Lord, with the liberty and justice of our
Roll call, Mr. Ernsting.
Can I help?
Span?
Here.
Hardaway?
Here.
Geraldo?
Present.
Here.
Bennett?
Here.
Whitey?
Yano.
Here. Let the record show, six council present. Nothing under petitions, communications, or remonstrations.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, uh, and I guess I would defer to, uh, Ms. Townsend as to where to put this. Uh, we need to amend the agenda to do a quick claim deed. Uh, this comes out of several meetings Dorinda and I have had on the old Wicks, uh, furniture site at US thirty in Mississippi. Uh, Mr. Touche, our planning commission attorney has prepared a quick claim deed. Um, Nancy, where should we, can we handle this anywhere or?
It's a resolution to, uh, to-
It's approval of a quick claim deed to vacate, uh, lots along the frontage road of, uh, US thirty in front of the Wicks Furniture Building. And I can explain it during the discussion, Madam President.
We can put that in, maybe Old Business?
Old Business, okay.
Uh, that's your motion?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by, motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway, to put the, um, the new easement and, I'm sorry, the quick claim deed under Old Business. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda, council payable registered voucher approval for November twelfth, twenty fourteen, and also the approval of town council meeting minutes of October twenty eighth, twenty fourteen.
Motion approved, second.
I have a correction to the town council minutes. Um, there was a motion that I made on the floor to apply any insurance refund money that we have back to the insurance to provide better insurance or to give back to the full-time employees. That's not what the minutes reflect.
Motion approved with the, with the correction.
Second.
Very good. Motion by Councilman Hardaway and seconded by Councilman Span to reflect the correct verbiage on insurance refund money that was, uh, motion that was made by Councilwoman Barron. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, a motion again to approval of town council meeting after the correction.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Geraldo.
No report.
Uh, Public Works, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, I believe, uh, talking with Mr. Spires, the paving has concluded, Bruce?
As of three o'clock this afternoon.
Uh, leaf collection continues, uh, as we all know. Um, how many passes have they made through?
Um, we're on our, we're, we're on our second pass.
Second pass?
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Very good. Council Affairs, Councilman Span.
No report.
Okay. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilman Geraldo.
Uh, no report.
Public Safety, uh, Councilman Whiting is not present. Does anyone have anything on public safety?
Uh, yeah, I have something under public safety. I'm gonna turn it over to Ed Yurka, uh, about the, uh, fire trucks. Just give them a rundown about when we're gonna get them and-
We do take delivery of two of the pumper trucks. Uh, two of them are in service. Uh, one is at the seventy-third Avenue Station and one is at the Taff Street Station. On Friday, we'll take delivery of the new engine for, uh, the fifty-seventh Avenue Station. And early next week, the tanker pumper for the Ainsworth Station is due to arrive. Uh, those are no particular order, they just happen to come in that way. So, as they come in, um, from the manufacturer, it takes a couple days to get our equipment mounted and located on the, on the apparatus. And I'd say by the, uh, first week in December, we'll be, have our fleet all taken care of and everything.
This is a silly question, Chief, but I'm gonna ask it anyways, 'cause I know about the pumper tanker out at Ainsworth. What are we doing with that nineteen seventy-one? What was it? Seventy-six?
Appigino.
I was gonna say, we could take it down to Clay Street. Are you, are we gonna try, are you guys gonna try and sell that thing, or is it worth anything?
Uh, in the, in the whole deal that the, uh, Fire Territory Board, uh, in the bond you guys sold it was, they were traded, uh, five apparatus were traded in.
Traded in?
Yeah, ranging from, uh, nineteen ninety-four was the newest, I believe, all the way back to-
How old is that pumper out at Ainsworth? Is it seventy-six?
The pumper that was still in service was eighty-four, but the tanker was the seventy-two, I believe, too.
Okay.
Uh, and actually, the one tanker we're keeping, I believe we're gonna talk with, uh, Public Works possibly if they, so they can use tanker for the new pretreatment program for the roads or whatever.
Okay.
Uh, but outside of that, yeah, the rest of it we're gonna trade it in.
Okay.
But we're right on schedule, everything's working out well.
You're gonna have an open house for everybody to view?
Yeah, once we get everything done, we're gonna put a press release together and, uh, get some photos taken of the apparatus out in front of town hall and have an open house at the station so everybody can come down and see what, uh, where all that, all that big money went for.
Anything else on public safety? Seeing on Parks and Recreation, Councilman Span?
No report at this time.
I have something I'd like to add underneath that, um, underneath Parks. Um, we have a new subdivision that's coming in across the street from Sedona that's gonna be behind, um, Indian Cultural Center, and I hope that there's going to be a designated green area for parks. And then we also need to start looking to see what we're gonna do about getting a park over there by Sedona because we have no Parks and Ward Five.
Okay.
So, I've made phone calls, I just haven't had nothing called back, so I need to say it.
Got that, Jeff?
Okay. Anything else on their Parks and Recreation? Environmental Affairs, Councilman Geraldo?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Matt Lake. I guess we got a prestigious award.
Yeah, we actually, uh, just about two hours ago, uh, received a special plaque from FEMA that recognizes the Town of Maryville as an official CRS community. It reads, "The Town of Maryville successfully participates in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. The community has undertaken a series of meaningful activities to protect its citizens from losses caused by flooding and has significantly exceeded the requirements for NFIP participation and effective floodplain management." Uh, we ranked a seven, which is the highest you could possibly rank or the best you could possibly rank in the state of Indiana. Uh, we're one of only twenty, twenty-one CRS communities in the state of Indiana, and we're the first in Northwest Indiana, uh, accompanied by now Lake County and Dyer, to become a CRS community. And really, what this means is, uh, residents that have mandatory flood insurance are gonna receive an automatic fifteen percent, uh, reduction in their flood insurance premiums indefinitely. Every year, I'll submit paperwork, uh, to keep us compliant, but, uh, this is a, you know, uh, something that we did to get up, out to our residents, to help them, um, you know, and, and through our efforts, uh, you know, reach out and save them some money, which is essential now because flood insurance premiums are gonna be quadrupling. A lot of people don't know that. So, um, as the state building codes change, we could rank even better than this. But the stopper right now is the state building codes. There's only one community in the state of Indiana other than us that rank a seven, that's Hamilton County. Um, I'm also working to resolve some drainage issues in Ross Metal Farms. Uh, we did some initial field survey work and we're, we'll be working out set of engineering plans and preparations for a project this spring. And, uh, I'm meeting, uh, later on this week, or next week, with Metropolitan Pumps to review some specs for a proposed new, uh, stormwater lift station at Fifty-third Court. That's all, yeah.
Good. Very good. Anything else on their entire mental affairs?
I did wanna add that, uh, there was a meeting tonight, uh-
They canceled it.
They canceled.
Yeah, yeah. The, next month, though, that's for the local element of our basing commission.
Yeah, that's a meeting that I think that I'm gonna end up attending, and I've talked to Bill Emerson, uh, and myself and Matt, and tell them that we're wholeheartedly supporting that, and that's part of our master plan to maybe, uh, fund some of that, uh, what we're doing up there. So.
Okay, and their elections and public relations, I have no report.
Madam President, uh, I have two items. Uh, last Sunday, um, as you folks know, Rich and I are very involved in Aquinas School, and I wanna give kudos to my fellow councilmen. I had two people come up to me, Rich, and say, "We specifically need to recognize the students at Aquinas for the Veterans Program that they, you orchestrated. Um, was another fantastic job by you and Mr. Schooler, the principal." And I had two ladies come up and say, "We need to, you know, recognize the kids that did all the hard work and you organized it." So it was an excellent program on that. Uh, and secondly, Madam President, coming up on the twenty-second will be the Crossroads Regional Chamber Gala, uh, which I've had the pleasure of hosting or co-chairing for eleven years. Uh, again, we will give out the Police Officer of the Year and the Firefighter of the Year, uh, at that event, as well as the Businesswoman of the Year, um, at that event. So, um, everyone, uh, look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you, Sean. I, uh, I appreciate that. I just apologize for not being there, but I had another emergency at church that, that was more important. But, uh, I understand it was a good program. Thank you.
Okay, economic development, Councilman Geraldo.
Uh, no report.
You told the liaisons, Councilwoman Barron.
Yeah, I, uh, talked with Teresa Proctor from the Maryville High School. She runs the media program there, and, uh, she gave me a call and wanted to know what the caps went for, for the last program that we had, and explained to her that it went to the Fifty-fourth Rain Garden, which achieved two high honored awards. She's going to put that in the loo, in the newsletter, and she's also gonna put it in the Maryville School paper. And then she also informed me of a couple of things that were going on in the high school. Uh, one of them was a geometry teacher that has hung a birdcage up down in the cafeteria made out of all recycled material for the caps to go into. And, um, also, I talked with Jeanette Anderson, that's the head of the photo club in the arts department, and she is definitely on board with helping me out with the tunnel. And that's all I have.
And their town government reorganization and ADA compliance, I have no report. Moving on to abandoned properties, Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we had a meeting this afternoon, this morning, rather, and, uh, Councilwoman Miano brought in a guy by the name of Kevin Hutnick. He's a sales rep for Bart Vickery, uh, and Company. And he shared a lot of information with us. I am sending a letter to State Rep., uh, Vernon Smith and State Senator Lottie Randolph. And I'm giving him two dates for next month, either the third or the seventeenth, where we would, uh, be able to sit down with them. One of the things that we need to do is the state of Illinois has a foreclosure preservation law that says that any time the banks foreclose on a piece of property, that they have to leave some type of electricity in the building for the sub pumps. And so I wanna see if I can get, uh, those two gentlemen to kinda co-author something that would help not only Maryville and Northwest Indiana, but the entire state of Indiana, because that's one of the major problems. The guy showed us the picture today of a house that had flooded and had six feet of water and nothing but black mold up the walls. And that's what happens with that, is that then you end up not being able to sell it for what it's actually worth. And, you know, he showed us properties that where people paid ten thousand dollars for a hundred thousand dollar home or twenty thousand dollars. And the communities are taking a beating because of that. But if we can get this law enacted, then that'll save us because it takes, uh, up to five years for a foreclosure, for a bank foreclosure, meaning Chase or Wells Fargo, takes that long for them to finally get it back into the market. And during that period of time, three to five year period of time, then absolutely nothing is being done to that home. Maybe cutting the grass, but there's nothing do, been going on if the electricity's off and, and the place is flooding. So we need to, uh, make a concerted effort to make sure that, see if we can get something like that started. And, uh, but, so Gene and Don and anybody else that wants to attend, I'll let you know the exact date, but it's either the third of the, uh, or the seventeenth of December, we will sit down again and hopefully, uh, get some help when they, when legislation gets back in in January.
Can they add, Richard, uh, a notification process? I mean, that's probably one of Vicky's biggest headaches, is make it a requirement that when you foreclose, the first thing you do is communicate to the local municipality via certified mail, return receipt, that we are foreclosing on seventy-seven twelve Delaware Place, and then we know who we're de, who's Vicky. She'll get notification of who to deal with from then on. Because these people are gonna up and leave, obviously, and do what they do, but the banks are left holding the bag, and then she's gotta try and chase down who's got what. It might make it a little bit easier on her, I don't know, Dorinda.
Well, one of the problems, Sean, is that big banks, Chase, Wells Fargo, they don't really care, because at some point, at the end of the day, it's gonna be a tax write-off for them.
Yeah.
But the smaller lending institutions, they're, they're a little bit more, uh, user-friendly.
Mm-hmm.
And so they may be willing to do something like, I don't see Chase or Wells Fargo-
Notifying us?
Notifying us. But if we put something, if we have a law-
Right.
Then maybe we can kinda like, uh-
Something in that law that, some type of notification requirement.
Exactly. We need to put some teeth in something, yeah. So, yeah. That's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance is fourteen dash thirty-three, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating an unsafe blighted property fund retroactive to nine four fourteen and transferring previous lien monies into said fund. Um, there is a need to create an unsafe blighted property fund for the purpose of paying to board up or demolish such properties, and the funds that were deposited in the general fund should go into this newly created fund. The amount of five thousand, eleven dollars on nine four fourteen will be transferred to this new fund.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Pettit. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Ernsting.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Geraldo?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Ordnance fourteen dash thirty-four, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the local option income tax public safety fund for the year twenty fourteen, not included in the current budget. For these additional appropriations for the twenty fourteen salary raises resulting from the revenue of the local option income tax for public safety, for commander, one hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents, corporal, one hundred and seventy-two dollars, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, patrolman, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for a total of six, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-four hundred and forty-seven cents. Any discussion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Roll call, Mr. Ernsting.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Geraldo?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit? Yes.
Yano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to second readings, ordinance is fourteen dash thirty-one, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the Parks Fund for the year twenty fourteen, not included in the current budget, to pay and defray expenses for the calendar year twenty fourteen and for the purposes herein specified, the following sum of sixty thousand dollars for contractual services.
So moved, second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. Any discussion? Seeing none, public comment? Public comment? Public comment. Seeing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Ernsting.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Geraldo?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit? Yes.
Yano?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to resolutions, resolution fourteen dash forty-nine, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana transferring monies of the twenty fourteen budget within the Broadway TIF fund for a decrease of one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars, and from the Broadway TIF, an increase of one hundred seventeen thousand dollars and, uh, seven hundred dollars, uh, no change.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Barron. All of, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution fourteen dash fifty, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana transferring monies of the twenty fourteen budget within the Mississippi Street TIF fund for a decrease of two hundred thousand, four thousand, two dol, two dollars, wait a minute, six hundred ninety, ninety dollars and zero cents, and for an increase of two hundred, two thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety dollars, uh, for an increase, uh, no change.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Barron. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Resolution fourteen dash fifty-one, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana approving the issuance of certain Town of Maryville redevelopment districts, special taxing district bonds, and other related matters. On November twelfth, twenty fourteen, uh, the Town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission, uh, the governing body of the redevelopment district of the Town of Maryville, adopted its resolution entitled "Bond and Ban: Resolution of the Town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission Authorizing the Issuance of Town of Maryville Redevelopment Districts, Special Taxing District Bonds, and the Issuance and Sale of Bond Anticipation Notes in anticipation of the issuance and sale of such bonds for the purpose of raising money for property acquisition, redevelopment, and economic development in or serving the Broadway economic development area."
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero.
Ooh, God bless you.
BZI action. Petitioner Regent Clean Phil LLC, please come up and so, to the mic. The owner is estate of Walter David Reinhardt. The request is a special exception approval and variance of use approval on a combined forty-two point three three seven acres of A dash one and R dash one zoning district. The purpose for a proposed clean fill facility to be known as Seventy-third Avenue Clean Fill Facility, location forty-three forty-eight dash forty-three sixty with Seventy-third Avenue, case number Z two four E one two dash zero eight one four, agricultural one zoning, and also Z two five U V three dash oh eight one four residential one zoning. As of today, we have received a letter. Please state your name.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Jeff Ban. I am with DVG as a project engineer representing Seventy-third Avenue Clean Phil, uh, LLC. And, uh, we issued a letter through, uh, Regent Clean Phil's attorney, Anthony DeBonus, a, a letter requesting a withdrawal of the petitions that, uh, uh, Councilman Morano has stated. Um, when we first met with the town, uh, beginning of this year, we kinda discussed a, what we considered, and I think it's been accepted by the town as well, a nuisance property that has some defectiveness to, to it. And we felt that a proposed clean fill facility was, uh, an ideal way of, uh, taking care of that nuisance property while at the same time providing some benefits to the town. And, uh, you've heard me say this before, your council, a number of times on this project, that we are not here to try to force a decision to make us happy and put a lot of pressure on the council and the town at large. Uh, we started off thinking that this was a good thing from the town perspective. We went through the public processes through the BZI, uh, received approval from the BZI, and then opened up some workshops and some, uh, council workshop meetings as well. And, uh, there had been a number of public remonstrances that, uh, weren't necessarily in support of this, but certainly put some, uh, some concern in all of your mind. Uh, there was a list of items that were defined by the council that needed some more research. Um, and we feel that we need to be following those kinds of direction. Uh, we are not in a position at this point in time to come to you and say, "Our petition's changed because of those things." Uh, the time is just not of, uh, wasn't, is not there to do that properly. Um, so what we think we need to do is withdraw this petition, and if in fact this petitioner wants to do this again, we would have to resubmit something to the BZI at some time. And I'm not suggesting we're gonna do it or not gonna do it. At this point in time, we're not gonna do it. Um, petition as it's before you doesn't work. We understand that from your perspective. If we want to modify that petition, we would need to come back to you with those modifications, the additional studies, et cetera. So, the action that we are asking you to do is take no action on the BZA's approval, but take action accepting our withdrawal, that this petition is no longer before you as a matter of case, and that, uh, in the event that something happens in the future, you'd see it at another point in time. But at this point in time, this project is dead as currently is presented from the perspective of the petitioner. And we also think, Bill Haff is here with me tonight, uh, we can't say enough to the town administration and all that you have spent time and energy evaluating if this is a good thing or not for the town. Uh, this did add to your workload, and we apologize for that, but we appreciate all the hard work that you guys, uh, all did in evaluating this and trying to make the best decision for your constituency.
This time, Madam President, I make the motion that we accept the letter of withdrawal for the LLC, uh, Regent Clean Phil, second.
Second. Motion by Councilman-
Excuse me, I, I need to interject one thing. Just legally, the, the statute requires that, that you take, that if the board does not take action today, that this, this petition would be deemed approved. So I need to state on the, you to state on the record that any, that that would be waived in, before the, before the board would, uh, consider accepting your withdrawal of the petition.
Madam Sec, Madam President, let, with all due respect to Jeff and Nancy, let's have some further discussion, because Jeff, the way the, the letter is written by Mr. Debonus, the second paragraph, "Regent has determined that its petitions require further study and possible amendment." Guys, I'm gonna state my position, and it's not my area, Tom, you and Don, this is your area, but as far as the town, no disrespect, Jeff and Bill, I'm not gonna vote for a clean, this, clean fill facility out there as long as I'm in office. I'm just not gonna do it, guys. Doesn't, what I would prefer, thank you, folks, hang on, what I would prefer to confer with Nancy on is, again, reversing the BZA's decision to a denial. I understand there's a withdrawal letter, Jeff, believe me, you and I, we've been through this. But, does this council wanna state on the record that, that while we're in office, we're not gonna, because what's the amendment gonna come back and say? The biggest thing we heard from all of our residents, all our taxpayers, was the truck traffic. Seventy-third Avenue, the dust and the noise. And that's never going to change. And the one, I don't know if the gentleman's in the audience, was he an ice fisherman? Is he here? He talked about two ponds at thirty-nine feet deep and forty-four feet deep. That ain't getting filled in ten years, folks. There ain't no way on God's green earth unless they're bringing in many more trucks, which is gonna beat Seventy-third Avenue down even further. So, do we really wanna accept the withdrawal with a little crack in the door that they can come back and do something different, Jeff? No disrespect. Or do we just wanna say as the council, "No, it's never gonna be a clean fill. It needs to be fenced." As I said before, we need to get with Reinhardt's estate and demand, Nancy, that it is a nuisance, and either you fix it, or you're gonna start fining, and you're gonna go in front of Judge Gina. Now, I, I bring it up for, it's part of discussion, guys. This is our discussion. We continue to have this. We had this at the workshop. We invited all these people, they came out, they voiced their opinion, they're the taxpayers, they're the bosses. We gotta listen to them.
I, I will- I will make one-
And it's, it's open for discussion, Madam President.
Right, I'll make one other point if I may, and that is that the, even if it's denied today, the, the, the town ordinances may preclude them from coming back for a period of time. If it's just withdrawn today, they can come back tomorrow and reapply.
Exactly.
So that, this, we can't vote today to never allow them to do this, to, to apply again, but the town ordinance would, if it's denied today, would prohibit them from coming back for a period of time and, and rather than allowing them to come back tomorrow.
Withdrawal gives them, yeah. They can come back in two weeks, as far as Nancy said in a day.
Second.
Okay, well, does he need to withdraw his motion in order for us to-
I'm with Sean, I say we never have a clean-
In order to act on Tom's, Sean's-
Yes, unless, if, if, unless the council wants to vote on the withdrawal, you can take a vote on the, the motion to withdraw, I believe, I believe it was seconded, but um-
So you're saying our, your advice to us is that we should deny it then?
I'm, I'm only here to present your options. If you deny it today, then, then the town ordinances prohibit them from coming back for a period of time, generally a year. If you allow the withdrawal today, they can modify and come back tomorrow if they wanted to and apply again to the BZA. And that's, I'm not here to make a judgment either way, but I, it's my job to inform you the, the legal effect of, of a withdrawal versus denial.
I mean, he says further, guys, in the letter, "Should Region determine that it wishes to proceed with one or more new petitions, it will file the same in accordance with the town's ordinance." Obviously, I mean, he's just been through the process, he knows that, but, you know, should they determine it wishes to proceed? Again, there's no definitive time, they can come back in January, they could come back next month, they could come back in June.
You know, if, if I can make comment to that, and I understand all of your position, I guess what we're, we would never come back to you if we would meet with council members and heard what you just said, Sean, we're not coming back. I mean, it doesn't make any sense to do that.
I mean, it's just-
So, you know, the only reason we would come back is because it's something that you'd want us back. It's not an application we're going to submit to you again in a very adversarial-
And it's, and I do want to make a comment to Mr. Hackett and to Jeff. I mean, they've been very professional, they've laid everything out, I think, for the residents and for the council, but unfortunately, guys, you're tackling the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the corner for the town of Maryville, and although I appreciate you trying to solve it, Bill, it's not going to get solved. It's too big. It was mined for how many years out there? And I don't know what to do with that thing. I, I really don't. The best thing we can do, and we're probably putting a Band-Aid on a gash, Nancy, is to have it completely fenced and somehow secured by the estate of Mr. Reinhardt, which I did not realize David passed away, but, you know, I, I don't know what to do with the property. It's, you know, unfortunately, and I hate to say it this way, it was pillaged and now we're left with the remnants, the town to deal with, and unfortunately, Mr. Reinhardt's not here. And if his family thinks I'm taking a shot, well, you know what? I got all these residents out here that, yeah, I am taking a shot at them. They've left the town with a mess, is what they've done. A huge, you know, someone has got a liability. I don't know who it is, Nancy, but it's just a mess.
If there are code violations, you have a code enforcement officer and they-
How are you going to fill in thirty-nine feet and forty-four foot depth of, of sand mining? I mean, you know, that's, we can't get that fixed either. I mean, it was, you know, what it's going to take residents to fix that, we don't have the capability. Nobody wants to see the truck traffic out there and how do you fix it? I don't know.
I, I think, Sean, one of the things that we should do is that we should continue to pursue them fencing it in and securing it to make sure that nobody can just wander off the street, you know, onto the property and, and anything happen. So let's, Dorinda and Bruce, let's get, let's keep vinky on it, let's be diligent in what we're trying to do. And I don't know who we need to contact, but I understand that they were out there cleaning up earlier around the gate or whatever. Let's stay on top of this thing and let's make sure that whatever we have to do, we contact them and we put the judge on notice that if they come to her, that she has to do the letter of the law and not skirt around the issue. Thank you.
They can, they can, they can-
Madam President, at this time, I'd like to withdraw my motion to accept the letter of, of, from LLC.
Second.
Very good, motion by Councilman Geralcheck, seconded by Councilman Span to withdraw his motion to accept the letter. Very good. And I think, Sean, as president of this council, we all speak, we all speak, like you just said, we will not allow, especially between two residential areas, one in Maryville and one in Shererville, to have the dust and the commotion and the truck traffic and the noise.
One, Madam President, one other item that Dorinda brought to my attention, again, to Nancy, since these two have two cases. Dorinda, I believe the one in the A1 zoning was the use variance. You guys want to, you want to vote on them separately?
Is that your recommendation, Dorinda, that we should vote on them separately?
Okay, let's do it separate, no matter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that your motion for the first one?
Okay, I guess so. I was waiting. I was waiting on something else, but never mind. I make a motion, we deny petition Z twenty-four E twelve dash oh eight one four for the A1 use variance for Region Clean Fill LLC in the forty-three hundred block of West Seventy-third Avenue.
Second.
Okay, very good, motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway to deny petition number Z two five U V three dash zero eight one four. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six to zero. To deny.
Madam President, I make a motion, we deny Z twenty-five, oh, I'm sorry, Dorinda, I did read that wrong. Let the minutes reflect that the vote we just took, Nancy, is on the special exception in an A1, Madam President. That's the special exception in the A1. Okay. My next motion, Madam President, will be a denial of Z twenty-five U V three dash oh eight one four, the R1 zoning, which is the use variance in the R1.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway to deny the use variance of use approval on Z two five U V three dash zero eight one four on an R1 zoning. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero.
Now, this puts the zoning right back to where it was, correct?
Always was, yeah, they didn't change the zoning, they were asking for use variances. This just puts the year, so the residents know this is a year timeline, so after a year's up, if they want to come back in and apply, we can't deny them the process. But at least it, it, it puts it at a year.
It's a year.
They would follow the notification process of the BZA.
We can make sure it goes in the newspaper.
It's always published in the newspaper, but they're only required by ordinance to notify adjoining property owners, which was part of the issue when we met two weeks ago with the residents, that some of them didn't know what was going on. With all due respect, I guess it would have to fall on either the newspaper, yeah, I don't know that the town-
It is published, it's a published notice.
Right.
So I mean, they have to really read the-
They have to read the legal notices to see.
I'm wondering if we can't go one step above-
But if you have to go one step above for these people, you're going to have to go one step above for everybody.
We don't want to do that.
Right.
Trust me, we don't want to do that.
I mean, you're going to have to keep your ears open. I guess I would advise my colleagues that if they get wind of this from Dorinda, the petition filed, then the councilman for the area probably need to, to get the message out to you folks.
Register letters go out to the neighbors anytime they do it like this. It's ever out. No, you, you think, in contact with that building? Not every resident. Well, you should have got one. Anybody who has contact, register letter needs to go out. Okay. We sign up, let's not, at least, if you get a letter, at least-
Let's not, let's not discuss.
Yeah, there, there wouldn't be, the, the law requires a certain notice and adjacent property owners should get it, but um-
It can always come.
Okay, moving on to, to old business, old business. Sean, we have a quit claim deed that you're going to bring up on your old business.
Uh, yes, Madam President, everyone's gotten a quit claim deed that was prepared by Bill Touche. Dorinda has got a, I believe, an email from Mr. Touche outlining that. What we have, folks, as some of you may be aware, the state of Indiana is going to be going through and approving the intersection of Mississippi and US thirty. They're going to be closing off the frontage road in front of Wicks. Consequently, we have had a buyer of the property who is going to be coming through, Don and I and the Plan Commission, to subdivide the property and redevelop the property. The frontage road was never dedicated to the town of Maryville, it was just put in and we maintained it.
Can we please have quiet in the audience?
Um, so we just kind of maintained it and what we were kind of told is that by, I guess it's common law, Dorinda, that we kind of just assumed the maintenance and the ownership, quote unquote. This quit claim deed cleans it up, it vacates the frontage road and gives the, the bottom end of those properties where the frontage road is situated, back to the owner of the north, which is the old Wicks building, which they will use as part of their parking lot when they redevelop it. This is going to be one large box and two restaurant outpads. There is a very firm commitment on the big box, but due to confidentiality, I will not disclose that with all due respect. So they will be coming in front of Don and I and the Plan Commission in the month of December, moving this project forward. It's kind of on the very visible corner, it's on an entryway into Maryville from Hobart. So at this time, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the quit claim deed as prepared by our Plan Commission attorney, Bill Touche, and vacate the parcels that are identified in the quit claim deed and return them back to the new owners of the Wicks property.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman, excuse me, sorry, motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span, to vacate the parcels and also to accept the, the quit claim deed?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, any new business?
I got to run, man.
I know you do, get going. I tried, I tried my best. But you just kept talking. Any new business? Any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Please come up to the mic, state your name and address.
Madam President, my name is Robert Kelsey, I live on the west side of the proposed fill site.
Your address, sir?
Your address, sir.
Pardon?
Your address, sir, for the record?
Fifty-oh-one Crane Court, Shererville. We're on the near west side of the proposed former site. On behalf of the residents that were in attendance in sitting and all the people that signed the petition, I appreciate, sir, that you represented your voice opinion and the rest of the council members that used sound judgment and listening to the taxpayers of the two communities involved. I sincerely appreciate your efforts and I commend you for bringing this before us before it became a shouting match. Thank you very much, you handled it very professionally and appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have to come up to the mic, ma'am, state your name and your address.
My name is Colleen Duffy, I live at seventy-seventeen Dove Drive in Shererville. I just wanted to present to the town council petition, several people in our community went around and talked to our neighbors. We posted on public social media, emailed, and we have eighty-three signatures from Maryville, ninety-six from Shererville, just within, you know, a couple of weeks since the last meeting. People who are very invested in their communities and as Mr. Pettit said, you know, we don't want this to be approved in the future. I, I realize it's a, it's a, a site that has, you know, issues and would be happy for it to be fenced in, but we really don't want to see anything of this nature come into this property in the future. I know we have to be diligent, there were a lot of people that we talked to, even though it, things had been put in the paper, people still had no idea, so we would appreciate any kind of publicity.
Hey ma'am, can you just bring the petitions up?
Yes.
And we'll take them under consideration, thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
On the mic.
My name is Dave Plath, my address is seven-one four fourth Starling Drive in Foxwood North. My suggestion was possibly between Maryville and Shererville, they put a weight limit on Seventy-third Street, this would prevent trucks, large trucks with heavy loads from coming back and forth down that street. It would save the streets. And my other suggestion is possibly, my brother's involved with a lot of different projects and stuff with the states and stuff like this, possibly turning it over to the state for a forest preserve area or a conservation area with the water lakes and stuff in there, or a fishing pond or a gated community with houses around it, you know, there's other things to do with this property other than a landfill, you know, and, you know, if you got it to larger corporations and companies, they might consider this. So that's my suggestions. So thank you very much.
Anyone else under public comment?
Yeah, my name is Augustine Rodriguez and I live on forty-five seventy-six West Seventy-third Court, right across, almost right across the street from the driving, and I've seen trucks going in and in and out, dumpster coming there, sometimes six in a row in the last month.
It's in the gated one or is it the one next to it?
The one is there, but they're, they're still dumping stuff in there. That one, that's on one road there.
It's, it's not in the gated one, it's on the other side.
Right, there's that one there. But why is there dumping stuff in there?
Uh, we put a, put a stop to that in-
There's no gate, there's no gate, nothing there.
It's actually the neighbor's property, okay, and we've become aware of it. He just got a stop order, he can't dump there anymore. And he's already met with Matt Lake, our stormwater director, Dorinda, right, and our town engineer, and he's working to come up with a site plan for that property that would work for everyone.
Yeah, part of his concerns is that-
Yeah, I mean, like I said, last, last month.
That's the site that's next door to it. It's not the gated one, it's the site next door to it.
There's no gate back there.
Right.
And they just drove on the back, next to you, they're coming back empty.
Right.
About six of them, one back next to each other.
Well, that's being addressed.
I said, I'm meeting this, I said, they're in body, so how they can be dumping stuff back there, you know?
That's being addressed already for the neighbor next door.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on public comment? Moving on to announcements, Seventy-third Avenue Madison Street Reconstruction Project Public Meeting will be held November eighteenth at six o'clock PM. The Environmental Resource Committee Meeting, November twentieth at two o'clock PM. The Town Council Meeting, November twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Meeting adjourned, seven-twenty PM.